All right. I'd like to call to order the special formal meeting of the Iowa City City Council, August 3, 2018. Roll call, please.
Cole.
Here.
Ms. Sully.
Yes?
Taylor.
Here.
Thomas.
Here.
Thurgmorton.
Here. Item two, council vacancy, option to appoint. This is a resolution giving notice of intent to appoint a qualified individual to fill the vacancy created by council member Botchway's resignation. Could I have a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Thomas, seconded by Sully. All right. I've asked Eleanor Dilks to summarize for us a memo that you put together. I've forgotten the date of it so that members of the public and all of our council members can understand how the state law affects what we're doing, what the constraints are, what our choices are, and so on. So Eleanor, please.
Well, state law pretty much dictates the parameters of your decision-making. You essentially have two options. The first is to appoint a person to fill the seat. If you do that, it's subject to a petition by the public to ask for a special election. Your second option is to call for a special election. So those are the two basic options, and there's various timing issues within those, which in some respects are easy to talk about when we actually talk about dates, but I'll just kind of give you the basics. If you make an appointment, the appointment has to be filled within 60 days of the vacancy. So Kingsley resigned on July 17, so you would have to make that appointment by September 15. So if you've seen in the resolution that I prepared for the appointment, this resolution, if you choose to go that way today, will give notice of your intention to appoint on September 4. You could push that date farther if you wanted to, but not beyond September 15. The petition requirement would be 637 petitions. It's signature residence date, and the validity of it's determined on its face. So if there are 637 signatures and they all have Iowa City addresses, then it would be a valid petition.
And the persons who signed only need to be eligible to vote?
Correct.
Within Iowa City, right?
Correct. So they have to be citizens, they have to be of age, et cetera. But again, when you look at the petition, you don't go into those issues unless there would be an objection filed. If there was an objection filed that somehow, let's say, 10 people weren't of age or something like that, and it affected the final number, then there's a process for dealing with that So essentially, because... So let's say you appointed, and then there was a call for a special election. The call for the special election has to be done within 14 days after the publication of the notice of intent to appoint, or within 14 days after the appointment is made. So in other words, citizens could choose to petition simply because they didn't care who was going to be appointed, they just wanted an election, or they could wait and see who the appointment was and do the petition at that time. And I think I mentioned in the memo that it would take 637 persons to sign that petition. And then at that point, you would be required to set a special election because of the blackout dates around the general. Number one, it can't be held on the date of the general, and it can't be held within four weeks prior to the general election and four weeks after the general election. So that would put... If you got a petition, that would put the date for... the earliest date for election in January. So those are... That's pretty much the details on the appointment. Your second option is to fill the vacancy by special election. And in both scenarios, the election has to be held at the earliest practicable date. And the election cannot be held sooner than 60 days after we give notice to the auditor that you've called for a special election. So in the... Today is the last day that you can call for a special election and get that October 2 date, which is the last Tuesday before the blackout period starts. Candidate filing deadlines, it's going to be... If you call for a special election, it's going to be a pretty fast... Today, for October 2, it's going to be pretty quick. Nomination petitions would have to be filed by next Friday because of the possibility of a primary. That period is that long. The cost of a special election is estimated to be $30,000 or so, and that would double if there was a primary needed. One thing I did want to mention to you is in talking to the auditor, there apparently is a possibility of vote centers being established, which could lessen that cost. So the auditor would... And this would be a decision that the council would make. If you chose to limit... If you wanted to limit the cost of the election, they would... The auditor would set up, you know, say, 10 special voting centers where anybody in the community could go to vote as opposed to the 24 polling places. Obviously, you have to weigh the cost against how that would affect the turnout in the election. And I think that's pretty much it, unless you have questions.
I'd just like to note that, as you know, Eleanor, I did not fully realize until late yesterday afternoon that nominating papers would have to be filed by, I guess, August 10, if we call for a special election.
Yeah, it's in the memo.
It's there.
53 days before the special... Yeah, there's a lot of timelines. Yes, it would be quick.
I have one other question. How many signatures would be required for the people who would be filing nominating petitions as candidates?
Yeah. The code says 2% of those who voted to fill the same office at the last regular city election. The auditor is telling us 128 signatures. The petitions are filed with the auditor, and so they're going to be the ones who are going to be reviewing them. So I accept their number on that. I'm a little confused because I know that there were...
She was explaining that originally.
What's that?
The total of voters in the 17 election.
Oh, the total of voters, yeah, as opposed to voters cast. Okay. Anyway, that's what we're hearing from the auditor, 128.
Okay. And those, again, would be just eligible voters?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, great. Thank you. Anybody have any questions for Eleanor about what she just described? Oz, do you have any questions for Eleanor?
I just want to add, you said if we decide to do a special election, the people who want to run, they have to submit the signature by when?
The filing of the petition?
Yeah.
Was that the question?
Yes.
The petition... So if you would decide to appoint, we would publish a notice of your intention to appoint, and the petition could be filed within 14 days after that. Or if you would then appoint on September 4, and it could be filed 14 days after that. So that would be September 18.
And just to be clear, that's a petition calling for a special election after we have already appointed someone?
Right.
The nominating petitions would have to be in by August 10, if we call for a special election?
Right.
54 kilometers.
Yeah. Sorry, I misunderstood the question if that's what was being asked. Yeah.
I was just trying to make sure we fully understood.
Yeah.
Okay. Do any other council members have questions for Eleanor? Okay. At this point, I would like to invite interested members of the public to express their views about this particular topic. I'd like to ask you to hold your comments down to a couple or three minutes or something like that because we actually have lives to live. So would anybody like to address some comments toward this question?
My name is Harry Olmstead. Eleanor, I have one question. That is, if there are more than three candidates to run for the election, there'd have to be a primary?
If there's more than two.
Okay, more than two. And when would that primary then have to be held?
It'd be four weeks before the special, so I believe it's September 4.
If we call for a special election.
Yes.
There also could be a primary if citizens call for a special election.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Harry.
Good morning. My name is Karen Caby, and I also have a question. If you don't decide today, then is that date in early Jan... If you don't decide today and you do decide to hold a special election, then that puts the special election in January?
Correct.
Okay. Is there a timeframe by which a decision has to be made?
On the special election?
Or appointment?
Or appointment. Yeah, the appointment has to be made within 60 days of the resignation.
Resignation.
And the calling of a special election needs to happen sooner rather than later because it has to be called at the earliest practicable date, so.
So if the term that is vacant was a year and some, I would probably be more in favor of an appointment to save the taxpayers' money. It's not that long of a period of time. But because the vacancy is for such a long period of time, it's for over three years, it warrants serious consideration of a special election, whether you decide that today or in a little while. If you decide today, I realize the timeframe is really tight, but because the petition is an eligible elector instead of a qualified elector, it does relieve some of that stress. So I'd ask you to think about that.
I just want to make sure everyone's clear that if you were to make an appointment, it would only be until the next election in 2019, at which point the vacancy would be on the ballot.
November 2019 election.
Yeah, and a replacement or... Well, and someone would be elected to complete the two years, two more, two additional years of Kingsley's term.
Right.
Yeah. All right. Anyone else like to address this? All right, seeing no one else, I want to remind all of us, myself included, that the manner in which a decision is reached matters as much as the decision itself. So I would like to invite us to thoroughly and fairly consider the pros and cons of appointing versus electing before indicating what our personal preferences are. So, you know, in other words, so we'd try to be clear initially about what the pros are, what the positive aspects are with regard to appointing someone, and then the cons associated with appointing, then the pros with regard to calling for a special election, then the cons, and then, you know, because we can learn from one another. Once we've done that, I'll call for a motion on the... The motion to appoint.
It's on the floor.
It's on the floor, right. Sorry, I already did that. Thanks. Okay.
But yet, it's perfectly appropriate to talk about the whole ball of wax now and then...
Well, it's hard to separate it, really, so...
Yeah, no.
Okay. So what do you see as the positive aspects of appointing someone?
I think the pro would be saving the taxpayers' money, and $3,000 is a lot of money. And I think the other pro would be, you know, that we would be able to get moving on a lot of things we need to work on as far as that goes. But I think there's a limited number of pros with a special appointment, in my view.
Yeah, when I count, or when I calculate, I think if we appoint someone, odds are pretty good there'll be a call for a special election.
I think so.
If that's the case, then we would be able to fill the position one month earlier than someone who is elected, assuming that there's a call for a special election. We'd fill it one month earlier. So we wouldn't get all that much if, in fact, citizens choose to call for a special election after we appoint someone. Can y'all think of any other positive aspects of appointing?
I think that's the most definite pro, is that it would give us a more full council as far as voting purposes and considering items. That's the only... That's the pro I can think of.
Please make sure you're speaking loudly enough into the microphone so that Mazza here can hear you.
Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, yes. All right. How about negative aspects, you know, cons associated with appointing?
I think the voters would feel that they didn't have a voice in the appointment process as far as the person that's serving them on the council. The only one I can think of.
Concur. That's the obvious con.
I think, you know, looking at the notion of democracy by definition, it's the people rule, and so having a special election seems to be the best. It reflects that value pretty clearly.
And if we appoint someone, as I already indicated, voters of Iowa City could call for a special election. And in that case, the special election would take place on January 8, as Eleanor already indicated, and that's a pretty awkward date.
Does it have to take place on January 8?
It's the earliest it could take place.
So I'm just reflecting on the letter we had today from the students in terms of asking that if it was going to be in January, to wait and have it when the university's in session, that still would be legal to delay it to later into January?
Okay. That's an important point. Thanks. I thought we would have to hold the election at the earliest possible date, given the overall thing.
Well, it's earliest practicable date, and I think you can take into consideration, you know, who's in town and voter turnout.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's important to know. If we hold a special election, also, the cost savings would disappear? The cost savings associated with appointing someone? No, I'm sorry. If the voters call for a special election after we appoint someone, then the cost savings associated with appointing would disappear. The last disadvantage I could think of has to do with basically students at the University of Iowa who would not be here, and Gustav, our student liaison, made that point in a memo or a letter we received from him this morning. But your question addresses that particular concern. Did we lose you, Maz?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, let's take a short break. We're back, Maz.
Thank you.
I'd say, tell us when you're about to drop off, but there's no way you could... No way you could know if you're going to drop off. Okay, are there any other pros or cons anybody wants to bring up with regard to appointing?
Well, I think the other con would be is that the person that would be appointed would be in a really untenable position if we had some very controversial issues. There'd be a perception of, even though we're following the law, legitimacy. We've had some close votes recently on various issues, and to have a tiebreaker phenomenon with someone who was appointed just calls into question a whole series of obvious concerns. So...
Yeah, okay.
I want to just... There's one more piece of information I wanted to give you here. So as you know, whether a vote is successful is dependent on the number of seats, right? So it's out of seven. That will continue to be the case. So a successful vote will take...
I can't hear you.
A successful vote will take four. With the supermajority, it will take six.
Even if there are only six council members present, it's still... Supermajority would be six council members, persons, right?
Right.
Yeah, yeah, thanks. Okay, well, let's shift to this calling of a special election. And again, please try to articulate what the positive qualities of doing that kind of thing would be.
This would be for the October?
Yeah, October 2.
October.
Well, that's when we have to do it.
Right, right. That would be, I think, the pro would be that we would get someone in sooner for the position rather than waiting until January.
Yeah, in those two possible scenarios.
Well, I think it's... Couple people have already said it gives people, the community, the opportunity to make the choice in terms of a democratic decision rather than council appointing.
Any others?
Well, I think even though we have the option to the point under the law, you know, I view our role as working for the people of the city of Iowa City, not to tell them who their leader should be. And so I think this is something that gives them the opportunity to elect their leader, their representation, the people that they want to represent them. And even though we have the authority, I don't think we should exercise that authority because I think that it's not as legitimate in the minds of a lot of community members as an election, which I think is the hallmark of legitimacy in terms of any political process.
Yeah. And just to be clear about a related point, if we hold... If we call for a special election, someone gets elected, that person will serve the entirety of the remainder of Kingsley's term, which would be almost three years. Yeah.
A little over three.
Three and a half years, yeah. All right. How about cons? I'll bring one up. Holding a special election early in October, meaning October 2, would give potential candidates very little time to decide whether they want to seek election, very little time to organize and fund a campaign. Moreover, they would only have a week to obtain the necessary signatures, though it turns out the number of signatures is really pretty small, so I don't think that would be a huge hurdle. And that might constrain the number of candidates, you know, the rapidity with which the election appears and the steps have to be taken. So that concerns me. I think ideally, people would have a little more time to think about whether they want to be candidates, a little more time to get their act together, you know? And that just would not be the case if we have an October 2 special election. And, you know, even if there's a September 2, is that when the primary would be?
I think it's the 4th.
4th, September 4.
It's four Tuesdays before... Let me just check. Yep, September 4.
And a related point is that the public would have very little time to vet the candidates. Maybe that's a good thing, you know? In lots of countries, I think of England in particular, Great Britain, they have two months to campaign. And, you know, that's a lot better than four years to campaign like we see in the United States often. But still, very little time to vet the candidates. And again, that... I don't think that's great. I think it'd be better if more time was available.
Although, to a large degree, Jim, when you think about even an ordinary election, although a lot of people get involved a lot earlier and start campaigning a little bit earlier than historically, the thrust of the election usually in the fall is after the school board election, and that's where sort of all the action really occurs in terms of the public meetings, in terms of, you know, that entire process. So I think the community's used to it, and I'm confident we'll get an exuberant set of candidates that are going to be willing to get on their walking shoes and start hitting the doors. So although it's a concern, I don't think enough of a concern for me to outweigh the positives.
Yeah, I appreciate and agree that it's not the best of circumstances that we're working with. But I don't know what... There isn't an easy answer to this. I do think since Kingsley resigned, certainly it's been a part of the public conversation. I think people have been thinking about...
I've talked to people who had no idea, literally, two days ago, no idea that Kingsley had resigned. I think most people have no idea Kingsley has resigned.
Well, that's maybe always the case, too, that, you know, there are people who are engaged in local politics and there are others who aren't. And I think those who, in terms of putting their name in to run for office, I think those people have been thinking about, you know, the opportunity, whether it was through appointment or through special election.
Maz, are you still with us?
Yes, I'm here. I think, for me, I really prefer a special election, even though it's for the city, you know, costs money to the city. But this will be the democratic way for the voter, you know, to choose whoever they want. And also, you just said, some people, even if they don't know Kingsley is resigning through a special election, people will start knowing, like, there is something going on here. Somebody's already resigned, that's why we have a special election. I am concerning about the time, but, you know, August 10 is really close. But at the same time, if we leave it to the public to call for a special election, and this will be held in January 2, this will give them more time. But at the same time, I don't think this is fair for the students not to be in town during that time. I don't know, it's really hard choice, but I still, like, think the public needs to choose who they want. And at the same time, they will know that it's a...
Thanks, Maz. You may not have heard a conversation we had at one of those points where you accidentally were disconnected, but it appears as though if we appoint someone and if there's a petition calling for a special election, that we would be able to hold that special election, I don't know, in the middle of January, after students have returned to the university. So I know that was a big concern I had in mind, but apparently it's not an insuperable hurdle.
Oh, okay. I wasn't know that.
Yeah. Can you think of any other cons, folks?
I just want to make sure you're clear that October is the date before the blackout period. You could choose a date now, you could choose a date after that.
And the date after that would be mid-January or something, right?
Um, well, it would actually be after the blackout period. It would be... Because we would give notice now, we could do it in December.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Mm-hmm.
What date?
Well, the blackout period ends on December 4. So it'd be the 11th, 18th. You might run into the same university problem.
Yeah, that's finals, right? Isn't that close to finals?
You're running into finals again, probably.
Yeah, finals.
And under those circumstances, if we called for a special election, we don't have then the authority to appoint pending a special election, like a temporary appointment?
No, you don't.
Yeah, okay, that's the one to clarify.
You don't. If you would appoint and then there was a petition, that person would serve temporarily.
Okay.
But you don't... You can't do both.
Can't do both.
So...
Well, I didn't realize we could... I thought we had to act expeditiously and therefore had to schedule it for October 2, given the blackout dates, et cetera.
No, that's the date, the earliest date. That's... If you want to catch a date before the blackout period, it's the second. The only one is the 2nd. You know, earliest practicable date. One interpretation of that could be is we have the ability to give 60 days notice to the auditor, and that's what we could do today. The other interpretation would be is people need more time to campaign. I don't know that that would be unreasonable, so...
Well, let's talk about date a little bit. I don't know if y'all had had a chance to think about this before the meeting, but I certainly had not. How about some preliminary thoughts about the choice between October 2 and December, whatever it is, the 4th?
I really... I really want to get moving on an election. I don't want to be held in limbo for that additional three months. And I think we have people in the city of Iowa City that...
It'd only be two months, it'd be an additional two months.
Additional two months. But I would strongly prefer the earlier option.
It seems to me one of the issue would be, do we want to hold it before or after the general election in November? And I'm kind of inclined to go with October. Maybe get ahead of the general election, kind of like the board elections, rather than holding it afterwards when I think people might be just...
Burned out.
Burned out, and...
Thanksgiving, finals.
Yeah, I think after that point, the energy and focus might be lost.
Yeah, I was thinking about that as well. And I would agree with that general point. Maz, are you hearing, are you tracking this particular conversation? We're just learning, we have a choice actually between October the 2nd and December the 4th if we choose to schedule a special election. What, no?
That's wrong.
It's wrong.
Because we need, we need the primary.
Never mind, Maz.
So it is the 8th. The 8th is the earliest.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so the choice...
It is the 8th.
All right, so the, just to be clear for Maz, the choice really is October 2nd versus January the 8th by my pink marks here. Okay, well, I think we probably know what we would prefer on that point. Okay, does anybody want to bring up any other pros or cons with regard to either of the options we have? All right, if not, we have a motion before us to appoint a replacement for Kingsley, basically. So I think we should have a roll call on that particular point.
Thomas?
No.
Throgmorton?
No.
Cole?
No.
Mims?
No.
Salee?
No.
Taylor?
No.
Motion carries 6 to 0. Let's turn to item 3.
It failed.
Not carried.
It failed.
I'm sorry, it failed, yeah. Failed 6 to 0. There is a difference between carried and failed, isn't there? Item 3, council vacancy, option to call for a special election. This is a resolution setting special election to fill a vacancy created by council member Botchway's resignation. Could I have a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Salee, seconded by Thomas. Discussion, so the practical thing is, if we approve this, we will be calling for a special election on October the 2nd, correct? And you have a, you gave us a draft notice, right?
No, that's the notice that we would need if you appointed, so we don't have to deal with that notice. I would, the auditor would, does want me to request if you have any interest in the voting centers.
Can you provide any clarification about that or go back over what you told us earlier?
What the auditor is telling me is that they have the ability, if the council wants them to go this way, that the cost of the election is largely driven by the poll workers, and so the more polling places you have, the greater the cost. And she said they have the ability to establish voting centers. In other words, there's not a polling place where you have to go. Anybody in the community could go to one of these, go to one of these voting centers and vote, and they might do eight of them, or 10 of them, or something like that, and it might reduce the cost of the election by half or so.
Is that in addition to the regular or in lieu of?
No, be new. I mean, obviously, the definite downside of that is people know where their polling places are. That's going to be a whole informational, information campaign, it seems to me, to try to get the word out on where people are supposed to be voting, so.
Yeah, and have we done this before?
Not that I'm aware of.
Yeah.
I wouldn't want that.
I wouldn't want that either.
I agree.
No. It's going to be confusing enough, I think.
Yeah, just to get the word out.
Okay, any further discussion about this item?
I don't know if we can make our, I'd just like to elaborate a little bit. I mean, I think that I'm really excited about this. I mean, everyone get on their walking shoes, get out to the farmer's market, discuss the issues. It's fall, and fall is election season, and so I'm really excited about the opportunity to sort of ventilate some of these issues out in the public square, and so we can sort of get that feedback. We usually don't get that, we get feedback in various contexts, but I'm really looking forward to it. I think it's going to follow this campaign season, and so let's get moving, and, you know, looking forward to see how everyone does out there in the public.
Anyone else want to make a final comment? I don't hear anybody. Roll call, please.
Throgmorton?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Salee?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Motion carries 6 to 0. Could I have a motion to accept correspondence for items 2 and 3, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Thomas, seconded by Cole. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 4, could I have a motion to...
Before we do the adjournment, so if there's, if there is a need for a primary, it'll be on September 4th, you have a meeting scheduled for that date.
Oh.
Do you want to keep that in place? Do you want to wait and see if there's a need for a primary, or?
Well, the same would be true for the special election on October the 2nd. Don't we have that scheduled?
Yeah.
Yeah. So I don't think that's problematic, but, I mean, maybe others do, but I'll explain why I don't. That was, that practice was instituted after we had a council election on the night of a council meeting, and one of the council members lost. And it was pretty difficult emotionally for that council person. And this is the way I hear it from Marion Carr, our longtime city clerk, and that afterwards, the council decided, I don't know who, but the council decided not to have them occur simultaneously. So this is different. We're filling a vacant position.
Eleanor, I have one question. When, with the special election, if that's on October 2nd, when does that person take office?
After the canvassing of the votes, and the auditor said that's about a week after.
Okay, so they'd be ready for the next meeting?
They'd be pretty quick. Now.
Okay, good deal. Any other comment, discussion? Hearing none, could I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Cole, seconded by Thomas. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Yeah, all opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We all adjourned.